Twenty twenty, we will have our pledge of allegiance by Councilman Fieldboy.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move down to agenda item three, recognition and public presentations. Leah?
We don't have any, not in our world.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move down to agenda item number four. Anyone signed up for public comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, we'll move down to agenda item number five, consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda, approval of minutes for the February the fourth, twenty twenty council minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We move down to agenda item six, which is a public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve application five twenty dash oh one oh one. Josh Whitfield requests a variance from Article fifteen, section fifteen oh nine C, table six of the Statesboro zoning ordinance for the installation of two signs with a maximum height of twenty-four feet at the property located on eighty-seven South College Street and Sign District Four and the Central Business zoning districts. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, Jason?
Mayor, as noted, Josh Whitfield, Whitfield signs seeking a variance on behalf of his client, Ranko, in the West District Development. So, as brought before you in the past, the current zoning for the West District Development prohibits any signs from being installed higher than twelve feet. And so, as you see on the screen, just the current elevation for Ranko's signs, we'd like the wall sign to be installed at the top of wall elevation of the building, which prohibits him from being able to meet the twelve-foot minimum, excuse me, the twelve-foot maximum requirement. So he's seeking a variance for this proposal.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone here to speak for the request? Is there anyone here to speak against the request? All right. Is there a motion to close the hearing? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any discussion by council? All right, seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's show that agenda item six has passed. We'll move down to agenda item seven, which is a public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve application CUV nineteen dash ten oh seven. Paula Becker requests a conditional use variance from Article seven dash A of the Statesboro zoning ordinance for point two-one acres of property located at one oh nine Broad Street to utilize the property as an addiction recovery community residence in the R-six family residential zoning district. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Jason, if you give us some insight?
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant, property owner Paula Becker, is requesting a conditional use variance to utilize one oh nine Broad Street as a long-term residential addiction recovery facility with seven adults. Subject site is currently zoned R-six, single-family residential, and the Statesboro zoning ordinance does not address or define these types of facilities, group homes, personal care homes, or recovery residences, or design any appropriate zoning designation for this use. Previous requests for the subject property's conditional use, which includes a daycare center and/or a group home, were tabled by city council and then later withdrawn by the applicant. At the September third, twenty nineteen, city council meeting, resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty, the resolution put into effect a six-month moratorium on the issuance of conditional use variances for community residences was approved by council. However, section two of this resolution states the following, quote, "Nothing herein shall be interpreted or applied to prohibit the submission of or review of an application for reasonable accommodation during this moratorium period." Under this request, the applicant has requested a review of this application for reasonable accommodations. Further, this conditional use variance is needed in order to provide rehabilitative services to an adult population. There are no other similar uses within six hundred and sixty feet, which deemed to be a city block, of the proposed community residence group home use. And lastly, the subject site is suitable for the proposed use and could still be used as a single-family residence should this use be granted. For these reasons, and given the applicant has made a request for reasonable accommodations under the Fair Housing Act, the city attorney and staff, city staff, recommend approval pursuant to the conditions of the staff report, including your agenda package. However, the planning commission unanimously recommends denial of this request.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone here to speak for the request? As you approach the stadium podium, please state your name.
My name is Paula Becker, and thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. One oh nine Broad Street is a home that is optimal for the use that I'm requesting. We have a renowned hospital here in the town, and they're only there for, patients are only there for thirty to forty-five days. But with the disease of addiction, it takes almost a year for the brain to heal. I would like to provide a place for women. I only can house seven of them, it's not a big house, but a place where they can come and start to rebuild the lives that they've probably burned to the ground. Most addicts and alcoholics who hit Willing Way have ruined their credit. Families have utilized all of their resources, and so when they leave us, finding reasonable housing is sometimes rather difficult. So that's what I'd like to do. It's not a treatment facility, it's just a place for them to live. They need to follow rules, they have to have a job, they have to go to meetings, they have to have a sponsor, they have to do things, and not only that, they have to take care of themselves, they have to take care of the house. So everything that, you know, a normal person would do, only while they're learning how to stay sober. So I would be happy to answer any questions, but that's what we're wanting to do. We're not going to be doing any meetings there, we're not, they have to sign a sober living contract, so if they use, they have to leave. No parties, no, they have to be in before dark. I mean, they have some strict rules in order to live in this and to take advantage of this opportunity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak for the request? Seeing that there is none, is there anyone here to speak against the request? Please approach the podium. And as you approach the podium, please state your name.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Pete Williams, and I'm before you today to voice my concerns regarding the variance requested at one oh nine Broad Street. I've got a thumb drive here with some photos. Can I give that to someone to show those photos?
Can you pull them out?
I bought my first piece of property on Broad Street in nineteen ninety-four. It was an empty lot, and I built a triplex on it. Once the building was built, I moved into one of these units. Since then, I have lived on Broad Street for the last twenty-six years. My home is at one fifteen Broad Street, two doors down from this property at one oh nine Broad Street, and I'm not for the passing of this variance for many reasons. First, it's my home. I don't want to live next door to this. I have an eight-year-old son that plays in the yard, rides his bicycle in the street, and we go for walks in the neighborhood, and I don't want to see this daily. I don't want to expose him to this. I'm sure that everyone in this room wouldn't want this next door to their home where they raise their children. Next reason is neighborly feel of our neighborhood. I believe that if this variance is approved, it will diminish the neighborly feel of our neighborhood. Today, I know many of my neighbors, some of them are in this room tonight and are also in opposition to this variance. We all speak to one another, we say good morning or hi when we see one another, we spend a minute with one another to get caught up on things. It's a good place to call home. Statesboro is a good place to call home. When I first moved on Broad Street twenty-six years ago, it was mainly families, but that gradually went away. There was a time that crime and drugs moved in. Our homes and cars were broken into, and you could see drug transactions occurring. I attended the Citizens Police Academy at our local police station for ten weeks, and after that, I started looking for ways to deter crime and drug activity in our neighborhood. Over the last twelve years or so, the crime and drug activity has slowly moved out. Alarms were put in all the places I own, and some places, video doorbells were installed, deadbolt locks were installed, foundation plants around the buildings are kept low to prevent anyone from hiding. I screen all the tenants and do background searches on them. Today, I see people enjoying our neighborhood and getting along with each other. From what I'm being told, who occupies the addiction recovery places are instructed not to talk to anyone, not to say good morning, not to say hello, not to wave, not to engage anyone in conversation. So based on this, residential neighbors is not a good fit to have an addiction recovery located within. I'm currently building some apartments at the corner of Broad and Cherry Street. When I was working with the city and putting this project together, I was introduced to Article triple X of Statesboro Municipal Code. It's fourteen pages of different things to promote a better downtown area. The city has spent many hours on putting this together, and a good number of our citizens assisted with their input. This Article triple X addresses many things, such as parking. It wants all parking either in the rear or side of the buildings. It even addresses the color we can paint our buildings and size of sidewalks. On section three thousand, Declaration of Legislative Intent, it reads that this district is especially vulnerable to intrusion from incompatible uses and physical development practices. This district is so important and significant to the city that it justifies a special set of regulations designed to protect and enhance its character in light of new development. The potential to impact existing development is much less in other areas of the community than in the downtown core area. Hence, the regulations outside the district's area do not merit the same protection. When talking with the city about this Article triple X, I was told that the city and the Downtown Development Authority was wanting a more neighborhood feel downtown, which was the reason the city wanted the front doors closer to the street, having a larger front porch and installing sidewalks. The project I'm currently doing will have all of those. I don't think approving the variance at one oh nine Broad Street would be a step forward in achieving a more positive neighborhood feel and enhancing our downtown's character. I believe it would be a step backwards. Next is the ability to attract good neighbors and good renters. I believe if someone is looking for a place to live and they are deciding between two different properties where one has the addiction recovery next door and the other one doesn't, they are going to pick the property that doesn't have the addiction recovery next door to live. Next is crime. Us as neighbors have no ideas of these people's background and what crimes they have committed and what they're capable of doing. Over the years, over the years, I've had some issues where crimes have been committed from people living in these addiction recovery places. I've had backdoors kicked in, bedroom windows smashed out, and things stolen from my tenants. One occupant of such a place stole a tenant's vehicle. Next is diminished property value. If this is passed, people are not, are going to want to live next to this or buy property next to this. If someone is looking to buy a property and an addiction recovery place is nearby, it's going to make the property less attractive, which will lower the selling price, which will ultimately diminish our property values. The project I'm currently working on will be nine units. All of these people who will live there will be paying water bills, gas bills, walking downtown to shop, walking downtown to eat, attending First Fridays and shopping at the farmer's market. I believe if this is approved, it will make leasing these properties more difficult. Next is parking. This location only has one parking space, maybe two, and these vehicles will have to back into Broad Street to exit. Will you please show the one oh nine Broad Street parking place?
Not working.
Not working, okay. That's the way it goes sometimes. But anyway, I'll kind of describe it to you. Basically, the house sets up where it's got a single lane beside it, and it goes into like a little carport area, and at max, you can do is park two vehicles there. Then you, once you park, you'd have to back back out on Broad Street. There's no way to turn around and that sort of thing. Based on the conditional use variance, a total of seven people would be occupying this building, six in treatment and a house mom, and the landlord would be at this location a lot. During the planning board meeting back on eleven five of nineteen, Ms. Becker said that the people occupying this location would have to earn the right to drive. She didn't say they would never have the right to drive, she said they would have to earn the right to drive. So based on this, there's a potential of eight vehicles being at this location at once. Co-section seven oh one dash A subsection I six states, no on-street parking of business-related vehicles shall be permitted at any time. If this is approved, this will be a business operating in a residential section, so all these vehicles are business-related. So if they can't park on the street, they have to park somewhere, they're on the lot, and there's no place for them to park. Let's talk about the house mom mentioned in conditional use variance. In my opinion, the people who would be occupying this building, if this variance is approved, needs more supervision than a single house mom. They need around-the-clock supervision. These people need care, at least three different people who each puts in an eight-hour shift. These people don't need to be crammed into a combined space that has limited green space adjacent to where families live. They need more. Not too long ago, someone who occupied one of these places on Savannah Avenue took their own life. I'm not sure of this particular situation, but constant supervision certainly isn't needed in this type of environment. Not a single house mom who sleeps at this location, if she's asleep, she's not supervising anyone. While she's sleeping, she could be at risk herself of getting harmed. What if one of the occupants were mad at her for enforcing their rules and wanted retaliation while she's asleep? It would be a good time to do it. There's a lot of risk here. This house at one oh nine Broad Street sits in zone R-six, single-family residential, and Article two of the Statesboro zoning ordinance states that a family in the R-six zoning district may not consist of more than three unrelated persons, and there's a reason for this. More than three people brings more noise, more cars, more activities that becomes a disturbance to the existing families who live in close proximity. If no more than three is not allowed, then certainly seven shouldn't be. According to the conditional use variance, Ms. Becker bought this property on one oh nine Broad Street solely for the purpose of offering sober rental opportunities for women. This is far more than rental opportunities for women. This is basically a halfway house. These people cannot live in society on their own, and they need help. They need around-the-clock supervision, and they need access to councilmen to help them through this period of their lives. Ms. Becker knew beforehand that she would need a variance to make all this work. The proper way to have gone about getting a special use variance for this location was not buying the property and trying to force city council to pass the variance. The proper way to have gone about this was to enter into a sales contract with the sellers with a contingency of getting a variance approved, and then reach out to the neighbors to let them know her intention, seek their input, and get their opinion. This would have been the proper way of going about this. As far as I know, she hasn't talked to any of the neighbors. A lot of times, these recovery houses are pitched as a need for our community, but the reality is, these places are a money center for the people who own them. A lot of times, the owner states they will be only a certain number of occupants, but once permission is given to operate one of these places, people are crammed into these places to maximize profits. I'm being told sometimes two bunk beds are being placed in each room, so basically four people to each bedroom. This is a three-bedroom house of basically twelve people, and a house mom would occupy it. And if this is passed, there's no oversight that would prevent this from happening. Helen Cannon is in the audience today, one of my neighbors, owns Georgia's Bed and Breakfast located close by, has more oversight.
Mr. Williams, we've got to give due consideration to the agenda. If you will, we need you to go ahead and sum up your position.
Okay. I'll skip ahead on that there. Let's talk about the money that one of these places brings in. From what I've been told, they're charged from one to five thousand per person per month. So at six people occupying that, that's six thousand dollars per month. The high side will be thirty thousand dollars per month. Based on those numbers, they can afford a good location for. Talk about other places that they may could occupy. This type thing could occupy would be one twenty-five North Main Street. This property is zoned CBD, Central Business District. It has plenty of room, plenty of parking, seems to fit in, and there's not a family living adjacent to this property. There's a vacant piece of land over by Willing Way that could be developed for this.
Okay.
We already have four locations on Broad Street that does this or something similar. We don't need anymore. The addresses of these properties are two oh seven Broad Street, two twelve Broad Street, two fourteen Broad Street, three thirty-two Broad Street. One of the persons occupying two oh seven Broad Street, they busted out some windows over there, frontier communications the other day of a car. I own a good number of pieces of property there on Broad Street. I've got one oh one, one oh five, one fifteen, one sixteen, one seventeen, two hundred.
Mr. Williams?
Okay.
So your position is that you're against it?
Yes, and I own a fair number of properties over there, and there's three other property owners there in close proximity that has voiced their concern, they're in opposition, and there's other neighbors here in the audience that also are in opposition. I appreciate what all you do for our city, and thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else to speak against?
Am I able to speak from here?
We prefer you to come from there, but if you can't, then that's fine.
I can come closer.
Okay.
I have not tried this before, we'll see how it works. My name is David Posner. I am speaking for myself and my wife Barbara in opposition to the zoning change and its consequences, because this variance will inexorably alter the character, spirit, and quality of what is essentially single-family homes occupied by single families or single-family homes divided into apartments with one or two people per apartment. How many unrelated people will this change permit to occupy this house at one oh nine Broad Street? How many of you city council members live next to seven single unrelated adults living in the house next door? How comfortable would that make you feel? This proposal has made my wife and I both anxious and insecure. We are an older couple, some might say elderly. I am disabled, dealing with issues of post-Paleo syndrome, and recently broke both my legs. My property is separated from this property by a ten-foot-wide driveway. The houses are separated by twenty-two feet. The homes are just too close. You may have a living room longer than this distance. A previous recovery home at two oh seven Broad Street often had five vehicles parked at the property with ten persons gathered either on the porch or hanging out in front of the house. Is this what I can expect? And how will this next-door property be used? As a dorm, as a social club, as a sorority, as a meeting hall, as a clubhouse, or as a playground or recreation center in the front yard? What will happen to our quiet, private experience on Broad Street? Why did I feel uncomfortable when we drove by two oh seven Broad and saw multiple cars and people hanging out in front of the house, even when I am told no one who is a part of the recovery, or, when I am told no one who is a part of the recovery population is permitted to have a car? Why do I feel uncomfortable if there could be a continuous turnover of transitory residents? Most rentals on Broad Street and neighboring streets require a year lease. Will this become some kind of SRO hotel with multiple occupancy? What will happen to my property value and other homes next door or across the street? I would certainly not consider purchasing a property next door to a recovery home. Will the social life of this group home take place so obviously outdoors in the front of the house as at the property at two oh seven Broad Street? This is contrary to every other home on Broad Street. The number of residents in this home only increases its consequences. The awkward gathering of groups of people, the increase in noise from people gathered on the front porch and front yard about twenty feet or less from my home and bedroom windows. Conversations and laughter on the front porch and driveway can easily be heard and be disturbing in our two bedrooms adjacent to this proposed residence. The rear of one oh nine Broad Street, together with the garage, garden shed, and paved yard and driveway, create a serious and disturbing amplification of sound that is totally accessible inside the back portion of our home. At various times here in Statesboro, great concern has been expressed over the availability of parking for apartments and businesses. What arrangements are under development for parking at one oh nine Broad Street with residents, guests, boyfriends, children, and meeting attendees? My wife and I have lived on Broad Street for forty years, raised our children here, enjoyed the safety, accessibility to the downtown neighborhood and library, its quietness. Even with the recent Henley apartment constructions and others, note there are no recreational areas or special outdoor smoking locations. Privacy and quiet have been preserved. This proposed change of zoning and the use of this home as a recovery center with a large number of residents, potential turnover of residents, and observed behavior at two oh nine Broad Street make me uncomfortable. How would this make you feel? I ask for rejection of this zoning request and the current R-six zoning be maintained. I believe the rules with regard to not more than three unrelated residents should continue to apply to one oh nine Broad Street. The stability and security of a neighborhood and its neighbors depends upon trust. The passage of this variance will threaten that trust and may threaten our safety and security. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak against?
Mayor, council? I'm Glenn Haines. I live at thirteen Broad Street. I own the property. I would be sad to see any additional commercial use of property in a residential neighborhood. I think commercial use of residential property is the beginning of the deterioration of downtown, which all cities go through, or most cities go through, and then before sometime, many years down the road, they try to recover these kinds of areas and residences in the downtown to bring revitalization. So I think this is a good opportunity to say no, let's keep it a residential. I think the residence is the pride and joy of a city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else against?
Well, I sympathize greatly with the desire.
State your name.
Kathy Skidmore Hess. I live at one fourteen Broad Street, kitty corner from the one oh nine. Well, I sympathize greatly with the desire to provide housing and recovery space for women with addiction. I have three teenage boys, two of whom have autism and are very impressionable. This concerns me. I'm not saying that these women necessarily will be a problem, but I think having a residential neighborhood, in a residential neighborhood, that having these changes could be a problem if we have increasing number of halfway houses in the neighborhood. I've raised my family in this neighborhood. I've been happy in the neighborhood. It's a diverse neighborhood. And I'd like to keep it that way. I'd like to keep my property in that neighborhood and feel safe in that neighborhood. So while I have sympathy for what the goals of this are, I think that this has been done without a lot of forethought or planning before the purchase of the property, nor am I sure of that this has been thought through thoroughly by the people purchasing the property. It strikes me as a little bit of an effort of desperation, having purchased this property with an intention to use it in a certain way, that they're trying to push this through. I know that's not a legal argument, but thank you for listening to me. I hope you have a nice evening. Thank you.
Anyone else for against?
I'm Helen Cannon. I have Georgia's Bed and Breakfast. I've been there for twenty-five years. I spend a lot of time and a lot of money in keeping up my place, and I'm very pleased to be there, and I appreciate all that you do. But everything that everybody has said, I second. That's all I've got to say.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else for against? All right, seeing that there is, seeing that there is none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any council discussion?
Mayor, would it be appropriate to ask Ms. Becker to answer the concerns that have been voiced, since she went first instead of last?
If that's how you would like to use your time, that's your prerogative. So you want to call her to the caller?
Ms. Becker, are you willing to come back and try to answer some of the concerns that have been voiced?
I absolutely am.
Thank you.
So let's talk about the parking. That was a major issue for everybody. Yes, they have to earn the right to drive. Yes, they have to earn the right to drive. They can't come with a car. They're going to be walking or on bicycles. It is a year program. That's what we're going to ask them to sign up for. We're not leasing for a month. It's a year program. So we're talking about a car six to eight months into that year. Well, I'm not going to get seven women right off the bat. So I might have two women who have three months of time before I get another woman in there. So there's multiple times when there isn't a car. There's actually a two-car carport in the back, and there's -- so you can, you know, you could back the car in. I mean, I backed my truck in, and then so we wouldn't be backing out into -- onto Broad Street. As far as parties, they're not allowed to party. You would probably find more cars at the rentals because there's a lot of college students I know that rent there. You would find more cars and parties going on there. If they use, they lose their residence. They sign a contract, a legal binding contract that says, "I can't drink or use drugs while I'm here." Some of them that will come in, yes, I will say, they may have some legal stuff coming with them. So I might have to report to a parole officer saying, "Yes, they're following the rules. Yes, they're in a curfew," and they will have a curfew. "We're not partying on the front porch if they want to smoke." The house is non -- the houses -- they don't smoke in the house. They're allowed to smoke in the backyard, but they are not allowed to smoke out front. Will they be boyfriends? Absolutely not. There's no male contact while they're in the house. You know, they're there to focus on themselves and to rebuild their lives, to get a job, to go back to school, to start rebuilding the relationships with their families. They don't need to focus on male contact. I think those were the three major -- as far as crime, we're talking about seven women. I don't foresee them breaking down doors. I can't guarantee that they're not going to do something bad. I can't guarantee my own daughter isn't going to do something bad. But all I can do is model good behavior for them, tell them what the rules are, and expect them to follow it if they want a roof over their head. Some of these individuals, they can't get a roof any other way because they just can't. They don't have the credit. They don't have the resources. They don't have the relationships in order to do that. So if you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Are you okay with not letting them drive? Like, would you be willing to say that they can't drive to try to accommodate what their concerns are?
I honestly can't say that because that's part of the program. But what I can do is I do know that Kitty Corner from me, there's a rather large apartment or building there. They have a big parking. You know, I can make arrangements with that homeowner to see if he might let me park a couple of cars there. I mean, but I can't say that they -- because that's part of learning to become a, you know, a contributing member of society, is learning how to have a car and pay insurance and make a car payment and follow the rules of driving. I mean, that's all about rebuilding your life. So I can't say that you've worked this hard and then not allow them to buy a car. I can't do that. But I can make arrangements.
Ms. Becker, I understood Mr. Williams to comment about that he understood some of the requirements were that they could not have contact with neighbors, could not become members of the community?
Well, I'm not -- no, I'm not going to forbid them to say good morning or hello to their neighbors. Can they go over and have coffee with them? They can't. And that's just structure because you give them a little bit. Sometimes they take a lot until they learn how to live within society's parameters. But can they walk out the door and say hello to somebody? They absolutely can. I'm going to advise them not to have any more than hello with males, but they can say good morning or hello.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
You indicated that this is not a treatment facility?
Right.
Is that correct? So what is this?
It is a long-term residential, sober residential. So when they come here, it's a sober environment. There's no alcohol. There's no drugs. They have a very strict set of rules to follow, ones that you wouldn't have at a normal apartment. They have to be -- like I said, I said a couple of them. They have to be in before dark. They have to have a job within 30 days, and it's a job that they either have to walk to or they have to bicycle to. They have to go to a meeting daily. They have to have a sponsor. These are things that they have to do in order to continue with their recovery so that they don't slip back, you know, and relapse or go back into their old way of life. They also have to do some service work. They have to go to church. You know, these are different things that all of us do. These are just things that they didn't do during their addictive time. So they're just going to be learning how to live life again.
Are they going to be allowed to have their children, or is it just the women?
No, I'm not going to -- I don't, you know, I don't have that experience. I mean, I do have that experience, but I'm not willing to go there at this point in time. I am a certified addiction counselor. I worked at the hospital for four years. I've seen extended sober living work. I've seen it work. I have friends that are in long-term recovery. They're doctors. They're lawyers. They're teachers. They're bus drivers. They're construction workers. They're -- they're all of us. They just needed somewhere safe to learn how to do that again. Then that's all I'm asking. No partying. And as far as like a community environment, I mean, I want them to do that. I want them to learn how to live in the community and to like living in a community that's absent of alcohol and drugs. That's what I'd like them to learn.
Okay, and this is a one-year, long-term residential home. What is the monthly rate? How the women -- are they going to be -- are they going to work prior to? How are they going to take care of the financial obligation?
They're going to -- they have to have a job within 30 days. Their rent is not much. It's, you know, less than $1,000 a month. That includes room --
Per individual?
Per individual. That includes room and board. That's everything. They don't have to go to the grocery store. They don't have to buy their toiletries. They don't have to provide their bedding. That's all provided in that sum. I want them to focus on working, going to meetings, meeting with their sponsor, and just doing the next right thing. That's all I'm asking them to do. I'm going to take care of the rest. As far as as a house mother, you know, I don't know about you guys. When you got your first apartment, did you have a house mom? No. I mean, these are adults. They know how to behave. They just need reminders. That's what the house mom is there for. She's there to remind them that, you know, after 11:30, the door isn't law opened. You smoke before 11:30, or you don't smoke until morning because that's the rule of the house. They need to learn how to follow those rules, and so that's what she's there for. But do they need a babysitter 24/7? They don't because they're not drinking. They're not using drugs. They're not, you know, they're not breaking the law. They're working, doing their meetings and meeting with sponsors.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions?
Any further questions by council? Seeing that there's no further questions, thank you, Ms. Becker.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion by council?
I appraised this house years ago, probably about 10 years ago. The posers probably don't remember, but while I was outside measuring the house, they heard me messing around and anyway came over to see what was going on. Ms. Potter, did I -- well, Ms. Childs, did I do this for y'all? Okay, I was appraising it for y'all. But I can tell you on the driveway, on the house in question, the driveway is no more than about 10 feet from the bedroom of the posers. I can understand even if there aren't any cars. There's a big porch on the very back which faces the posers' bedroom. In light of those who have lived there since 1986, I'm going to have to -- I'm going to vote no on this. However, Ms. Becker, I am -- thank you so much for what you do. The world needs what you do and it needs a lot more of it, and I appreciate it very, very much. But I do have to look out for those who have lived there and who intend to continue to live there.
Any further discussion by council?
Kane, where are we at in putting together a proposed ordinance to address? What I would propose to council, Councilman Boyham, is to do an ordinance that is based on what has gone through in those Palm Beach County beach communities such as Delray and Pompano, which was -- which these ordinances were put in place in conjunction with their housing offices and with the federal courts based on that case law. And essentially, the rule would be that if these residences are more than 660 feet, the standard block apart from each other, that no conditional use variance would be needed for recovery residences. That's what's gone through in Pompano and Boynton, Delray, those sorts of communities in South Florida where they've seen a much higher proliferation of these recovery residences than even we've seen in Statesboro. Now, we think there's a lot here, but when you compare it to some county communities in Palm Beach County, Florida, and Arch County, California, you see a much higher prevalence there. And so essentially, what they have become, the rule of thumb that has come out has been 660 feet, that there's that distance between them as measured by walking from the front door to the front door, which is impossible with our GIS technology to properly ascertain that, is as long as they do that and are members of either national or state associations for recovery residences, those will be permitted uses. And we do have draft ordinances of those available whenever directed by mayor or council to present them to y'all. So like I stated in the memo here, the biggest question here is the question of reasonable accommodations under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Abstinent alcoholics and addicts are covered as protected persons under the ADA for the precise reasons that were enumerated by the opposition speakers here tonight, because of the stigma attached to it, because of that, and because of the fear that comes from the being here. But, you know, this is y'all's decision, but I do have to say that there's definitely potential legal exposure for denial of reasonable accommodations outside of that. The biggest concern we're going to have is the clustering of these residential recovery residences. What you want to do is make sure that they are not on top of each other. Make sure that the residents do not -- are not deprived of an opportunity to reintegrate into society, and that's what we do by these spacings, to keep from creating these de facto special services districts. And in this situation we have, we have a 645-foot distance between the property line of 207 Broad and 109 Broad. What that means is that the distance from door to door is going to be over that 660 feet. And that's what -- that is what communities are allowed to use zoning to prevent from happening, to keep clustering from happening. But communities simply cannot use zoning as a way to prohibit these uses within the community.
Okay, and you said there's potential legal matters that could be associated with this?
Yeah, I mean, we -- yes, Mayor, we've just got a question here of the only way that we can really deny it would be if there was a clustering going on and putting too many of these on top of each other.
Okay. All right. Any further questions by council? Any further discussion?
We could request a state certification. And that is in the staff recommendations, Councilman Boyham, is that they do receive certification from the Georgia Association of Recovery Residences, GAR, or from the National Association of Recovery Residences. And I think a reasonable timeframe with that would be within six months if the variance is granted. And we could, of course, put on the condition that off-street parking would not be allowed as well.
Okay. All right. Mr. Becker, if you will?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Becker, is it within the realm of possibility to reduce the number of residences in this home?
If we reduce the number of -- I mean, I'm only looking to do, you know, three per room. It's a three-bedroom, three-bath home. I don't think that's too far out of the realm. I mean, if you had a family move in there, you might have seven people in that home. I mean, it could quite house that. It's just an opportunity, not only -- because if you have -- if I just have a couple, then the community, the therapeutic community that you build in these homes, it doesn't work.
Okay.
Because you have to have that peer, you have to have those peers holding each other accountable.
Okay, and so you don't think that's feasible?
If you force my hand and I have to do that, then, you know, I'll work within your constraints. But from a professional, I have to say, therapeutically, it doesn't work if you limit that. I mean, three per room, they have to hold each other accountable on what they're doing at all times.
Okay, that's three per room?
There's three per two rooms, and the house mom has her own room.
Okay, so it's two rooms, two people in each room?
So it's six, it's six, and then the house mom has her own place, her own room.
All right, thank you. And Kane, just as a point of clarification, if you will, if we require the certification with the greater organizations, is that something that can be done prior to or would it have to be after?
My understanding of it is that they do have to be established and operational before that certification can be given. And in the staff recommendation, it does say within six months that they receive certification from the Georgia Association of Recovery Residences, and they would, of course, have to maintain that certification as well to meet the variance in place.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion by council?
Mr. Mayor, this is very interesting because I'm really torn. I know and hear the people who live on Broad Street and empathize with your concerns. I also, I don't know Ms. Becker, but I empathize with the need. And I'm also further enlightened with what Kane's sharing with us about we're trespassing here, violating the law by denying it just based on the population of the people who live there and assumed characteristics. So I was really wishing there was some kind of conditional way we could do it. So it sounds like what you and Kane are talking about, maybe we could approve it with -- can we approve it with the contingency that they have to earn that accreditation?
And that's a part of staff's recommendations?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any further discussion by council? All right, seeing that there's no further discussion by council, is there a motion to approve or deny?
So can we move to approve with and add a condition to it?
Yeah, with staff recommendations, that's what the approval would be.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
What's the motion?
I'm sorry. Move that we approve it with the conditions that have been talked about.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Can we quickly outline those conditions first? Of course. So approval of the conditional use variance does not grant an occupational tax certificate approval and submit. I don't think this residence is going to require an occupational tax certificate possibly for the single house mother, and they will have to be -- they'll have to get into business license application for staff review and approval. Within six months from the date of the variance approval, applicant will be required to obtain the Georgia Association of Recovery Residence's certification for the community residence to be located at 109 Broad. Applicant must be required to coordinate with City of Statesboro Fire Department to ensure life safety standards meet current code requirements. Applicant must not exceed reasonable standards for parking and shall avoid excessive parking at the location, and applicant may not install signage at the location.
Okay. All right. All right, we've had a first, we've had a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed?
Nay.
All right. Let's show that line item seven is passed with a four-to-one vote. Okay, we'll move down to agenda item eight, which is consideration of a motion to approve occupational tax certificate for massage parlor and massages permit. Mr. Penny, if you'll give us a little insight.
Mayor, in as a part of the Statesboro Business Ordinance, Chapter 18-136, the city has to issue a license for the massage establishment plus issue a permit for the massages, and staff has reviewed requests for this location, and the plan department, fire, police, building, and engineering all recommend approval of the issuance of the license for the establishment and for the massages.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion by council? Seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's show that agenda item eight has passed. We'll move down to agenda item nine, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2020-08, a resolution authorizing the closing of the bank account for the Water and Sewer System Construction Fund from 2010. Is it, Mr. Penny?
Mayor and council, when we did refinancing of the 2010 loans, we just now just simply need to close the construction account because we no longer need we just now, just simply need to close the construction account, because we no longer need it.
Okay, any discussion by counsel? Seeing that there's no discussion, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move down to agenda item 10, which is a consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2020-09, a resolution authorizing the closing of the bank account for the water and sewer revenue bond sinking fund.
And again, Mayor and counsel, we just simply need to close the account.
Any discussion by counsel? Seeing that there's no discussion by counsel, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let it show that agenda item 10 has passed, we'll move to agenda item 11, discussion of implementing a BLIT tax under Georgia's Community Development Tax Incentive Program. Mr. Penny, if you'll give us some insight?
Mayor, members of the council, at the December 17 city council meeting, the council had on the agenda the, the community development incentive tax, and it passed on two readings. And the action that was coming before the council, by your authority, you have reduced the multiplier that would be used for the, for the BLIT tax. And so, council either needs to override your, your move to reduce that, or they need to ratify the, and leave the, the current rate in place. And, and so, today we had a good discussion in the council work session, and there's still quite a bit of discussion that the council needs to have. But, council needs to decide tonight whether they want to leave the current rate in place so that council will have time and staff will have time to look at some alternative solutions. But, as of right now, the ordinance is law. The, the only issue is what the multiplier will be for folks that violate the, the standards that we have for properties in, in Statesboro.
Okay, all right, with that being said, is there any discussion by counsel? Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I, I will say there is a community demand from the real estate and the development, and the downtown development, and other organizations throughout the community for this BLIT tax, was the reason I brought it up in the first place. At the same time, I realize we have a new makeup on council, and, you know, before making any kind of decision, I'm sure you guys want to adequately get up to speed on that, and I assume that we do, no reason why we can't do that. As that being said, too, I'd also encourage the, the development folks and the downtown folks that are in, in support of some tax like this in some form or fashion, reach out to the rest of the council and, and have these discussions, and, and Mr. Penny, perhaps we should schedule a, or do this discussion during a work session, and, and allow some folks from the community to kind of give their, their feedback so that we, we can all be on the same page. That, that being said, in, in that spirit, if we could just take no action, the BLIT tax is on, is on the books, and then we can go about making, making an adjustment based off of the feedback we received from the community and the feedback we received from council.
So, ratification and no action results in the same thing, so it doesn't?
It doesn't matter, it's really council's prerogative.
Okay, and that is correct, Kane?
That's correct, Mayor, so like, if there was not an action taken to override it, we'd continue with your adjusted multiplier.
Okay, all right, and I would also afterwards like to go ahead and us to, to get this maybe, what is this, February?
Yeah, I was, Mayor, I was trying to figure out when, when you want to come, when, when you want this to come back before you, and if I might make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
I, I would suggest that we look at, and I'm not trying to push it off, but we have a lot that's going to be coming before you between now, and, and so if we could act, if staff would, if council would allow us to bring this back to you at a work session in May, I know this sounds funny, because this is the beginning of the year, but, but during March, we have work sessions already scheduled. In April, you're going to be dealing with, you're going to get into budget review. So, if we could, if we could schedule it for May, that would give us more time to do some more work, research, and give council time to, to get on board and get up to speed, and, and we can still be receiving information from, from other folks. If staff, if council would allow me that time.
Is there some way between now and then we can, so, because, you know, once we have the work session, then we got to do the first reading, then we got to do the second reading. Is there a possibility of having some kind of a community meeting before that? Not necessarily required for council, so that folks can give, come give their feedback, I think. There's a number of organizations throughout the community that, if we wait for them, then it's just dragging it out longer, and we've already been talking about this for a dang near year now, so.
We can, we can do that, but I'm, I'm also going to say again, just trying to manage workload, that, that it would probably be late in March before we could do, do that.
In March, okay.
So, that's the opportunity to go to the first round and to get means to incorporate that education as well.
Okay, all right, and so, and so the proposal is for no action?
Right.
Okay, council, we comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, let it show that for agenda item 11, the council has chosen to take no action. I would also like for us to go ahead, and I would like to hear a motion from counsel for us to go ahead and put it on the second meeting of May, is there a motion to do so? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, and then we'll follow up with the community meeting?
It's May 19.
May 19, okay. All right, good deal. All right, we'll move down to agenda item 12, which is other business from city council. Is there any other business from city council? Okay. All right, seeing that there's no other business from city council, are there any city manager comments?
Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to call to your attention, I put a press release on the fire department at, at your place, and, and I think a press release has already gone out about the Statesboro Fire Department's going to hold a neighborhood smoke alarm blitz. It's going to be in the Whitefield neighborhood, and just wanted to call that to your attention, where they'll be going around visiting and, and installing smoke alarms for folks that don't have them in their homes. And so, just wanted to say it's good, that's good work by our fire department, but it also helps save lives, and so, we want to encourage. And, and the fire chief in the earlier meeting told you that we've been doing it maybe once a year, and our hope is that maybe we can do this on a quarterly basis, to go to a variety of neighborhoods to, to make sure we're doing this.
Okay, yeah, thank you. All right, we'll move down to agenda item 14, which is public comments, are there any comments from the public? Seeing that there are no comments from the public, I would like to take this opportunity to announce that there will be a town hall meeting this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. at Pittman Park. We'd love to see you guys there, okay? I will move down to agenda item 15, which is a consideration of a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters, real estate, and our potential litigation in accordance to OCGA 50-14-3B. Is there a need for executive session? All right, seeing that there's no need for executive session, we'll move down to agenda item 16, which is consideration of a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do what? Is that a?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?